I'd like to call the meeting to an end. Welcome everybody. And for anybody that's number one standing in the back of the room or has a hearing issue in the back of the room, there are plenty of empty seats up here in the front. We don't shoot anybody in the front row. So please move forward if you need some more seating. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to call an official town meeting of 2016 to an end. And I'd like to start by everybody please stand and release your weapons. (Inaudible) United States of America and through other gorgeous stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd also ask you if you can sit, if that's okay. We will do a extremely long traditional one verse of God Bless America. If you can stand or you can sit. (Singing) All over America, where the land is full, sinners and sinners have been deprived from the mountains, to the valleys, to the oceans, why we fall. All over America, my old sweet home. All over America, my old sweet home. Thank you. At this time, I would recognize Jerry to love bless the meeting with a shot's blessing.
Let all be joyful, that we live in such a lovely town such as Jackson, New Hampshire, and that we have such lovely neighbors. And let's be thankful for the people who work for our town, both as employees and volunteers. It's a wonderful place to live.
Okay, first order of business, I will give you the results of Tuesday's election in event that no one got that. And at some point tonight, if there are any of those people in the room that have been elected or re-elected, you need to take the oath of office before you can perform any duties that you've been elected for in town. That's a state law. So please, if you're in the room, come see myself or the clerk. We will sway you in tonight. If you can't do it tonight, make sure that those people on the town whose offices get sworn in because they can't do anything after the policy meeting tonight until they take the oath of office. Thank you. And we here have some issues with that to use Pat. Okay, the results of your election. Selectmen, Bill Lockhart, received 134 votes and I declare him elected. Trustees and trust firms, Chris McLeer, received 151 votes and I declare that person elected. Trustees and senators, was a write-in, Alicia Hawkes, received the most votes at 13 votes. She accepted the position, I declare that position person elected. Library trustees, Roger Robbery, received 138 votes and I declare him elected. Sarah Duffy received 146 votes and I declare her elected. The school board, three years, Jared Dougherty, received four. We should have on there, but right? Unless you ran again. Received 118 votes and I declare him elected. School moderator, Tim Stock, received 161 votes and I declare him elected. The school treasurer, Christine Thompson, received 155 votes and I declare her elected. The town monitor, Randall Willis Kelly, myself, received 148 votes and I declare him elected. The supervisor, the checklist, Bobbin Reserve, received 157 votes and I declare Earl elected. The zoning article, Article 2, received 118 yes votes, I declare that article passed. Article 3, received 118 yes votes, I declare that article passed. Article 4, received 136 yes votes, I declare that article passed. Article 5, received 127 yes votes and I declare that article passed. Okay, I just would like to throw out a few very short rules that I tried to do before the meeting. I will ask that we have a very orderly and professional meeting and everybody is courteous and respects everybody else at this point. I will not allow debate between parties. Anybody that wants to question on the beta non article or direction, that conversation to me, the moderator. And I will try to allow anyone wishing to speak to the article at least once to get their chance, providing time allows, but we will not carry an item long for a long period of time. When things start to get repeating, what have you, we'll cut off those debates and take up the article. I'll try again, I'm sorry, just like that. I will not allow anyone to disrupt the meeting. And if someone is disruptive, I'm going to ask them to please stop and sit down. And if they continue to be disruptive, they will be dealt with and that person will be removed from the meeting. I hope we never get to that state of Jackson, but I do like to read that. I will also attempt to explain the issue of amending articles when it becomes an issue. As we've done many years, the town operating budget, which is approximately $1.59 million, we take that article up as its entirety, okay? We can, I'll go down through each article and we'll discuss each article, line item of the budget as on page 96 and 97 of your warrants. And we'll move on. If someone decides they want to amend a specific article, the transfer station, the police department, what have you, they cannot amend the descriptive line item, heating order, wages, things of that nature. You can bring an amendment forward on the line item should you ask, should you ask. It can be accepted, I'm going to ask that it be deferred to the end of the article before we take up the article in its entirety because whatever you amend on that particular line item, we have to also amend the bottom line to match that. So we're going to be doing it twice anyway. I will also remind you that New Hampshire State statute, on any specific group article like the town operating budget, we are voting on the total operating budget. And whatever is voted on tonight, if it's as printed or amended up or down, that's the budget that the selectmen have to work with. They cannot exceed that budget. But if you vote an amendment, that you want to direct an article to cut $6,000 for special equipment for the police department, that vote, that amendment basically carries no weight whatsoever. The selectmen by authority have the authority to operate the town budget within their means as they see fit and make sure everything happens. And they can maneuver all of those line items, but they cannot go over that bottom line without the DRA approval and that will probably require a special town meeting. I know that's been a question many years. More and more of these articles are getting grouped together. I've requested the DRA to find the revenue administration. We don't have a lot of choice there, so I'm going to try to simplify it because it has been kind of complicated. And unfortunately, hopefully next year we'll have a format that we can use when you're looking at page 95, that's the budget, those are the line items we're going to be voting on, but the individual categories are broken down in page 96 to 97, but not total. So you're going to need to kind of watch all three of those pages as we go through. I will allow each category of the line item program to be discussed. So I mean, you'll have a chance to discuss, it's just, I asked that if you want to make an amendment, hold it, we'll be doing it at the bottom line if it does come up. Okay? Lastly, just again, I don't think we've ever had it happen and I hope it won't, but should we have an article that ends in a tie vote, I as moderator will not vote on any articles tonight. Therefore, should we get a tie vote on an article, by statute, a tie vote is a no vote, the article would be defeated. Okay, so that's just, if anybody questions that, that's, if you want to say it as impossible as possible, and that's my decision not to vote on any article, although I have the right to. If anybody has any questions, please ask, otherwise I'll get right into the how to the warrant. Okay, I would like to entertain a motion to please dispense with the reading of the entire warrant as we will be reading each article as we discuss them.
So move it.
There's a second?
Second.
How laws and favors, if you'd like to say a nine?
Aye.
Oh, so move it. Article one, selectmen, proposed $23,576. I need a motion and a second, if there's any discussion on every article.
Motion.
I hear motion is a seconded.
Seconded.
Okay, is there any discussion? This is where you would look at page 96 and 97 of your warrant, and that could be broken down.
(Inaudible)
Yes. Hi.
I'm confused. We vote on each, were you asking us to vote on each one?
No, we don't vote on each one of these. You will be voting on the total appropriated amount of operating budget of the town. It's discussion period for each, each item in that budget. Look, it's confusing if that's the way the state does it.
But it's article six, right?
Yes, excuse me. I'm losing my control there, thank you. We are voting on each individual. What I'm talking about is what we mean to the town operating budget. And I'm not following the right page. Really, which page should I be following here? We're talking? I got the wrong page. I apologize, let's start again. Yes, that's right. I'm talking about categories of discussions, but I'm saying articles, you know? Well, we vote on every individual article. So on page six, in the blue section. I'm saying six because it's stuck around. Anyway, on page 88, we're going to start, okay? With Article six, that operating budget, we will vote on that article as is presented. And if there is question on Article 88, what I'm saying is you'll find your breakdown in those articles in the following pages of your warrant. It's confusing, I don't like this format and have it out, it's real. So if I confuse people enough, we're going to be voting on Article six on page 88. Is there any question on Article six? Yes. Yes, that's true, that's what I'm saying, you gotta go. I have to break down, if anybody has any questions, if not.
Could you just read the warrant?
I will. I'm going to go back before I call the law because, as you said, I was following this and a little bit, a little rusty, I guess. Okay, I'm going to read the article again here, and then if anybody has any questions. We're on page 88 of your town report. Article six, see if the town vote raise appropriate selectmen's operating budget of the town in the amount of $1,000, excuse me, $1,988, and so $1,988,492. Not included appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations, which will be voted out several. So that's, that, we're going to be voting on that amount or an amendment of that amount should something come up. The categories of that amount, you will find on the first following pages in your warrant. Am I clear now? So we're going to discuss the categories, if someone wants to discuss a specific category on that page, we can, but we will be voting on the entire budget.
So move.
Yes, forty more questions. I read Article six, we've moved it seconded, is there any question?
Yes, yes, yes.
Man, I should sit down and stop this again. Yes?
Yeah, I thought I saw somewhere at the end of the book, it represents a 22% increase over last year. Maybe I misinterpreted what's in the book, but if not, could you comment on that, the why it's higher?
Okay. Yeah, the twenty, we don't set the tax rate tonight. The 22% projected increase would mean we use no fund balances. Last year, you had a projected tax increase of 15%, but once your actual tax rate was determined, your tax rate at your actual increase was between two and a half and three percent. So this year, and we'll do the same thing, I mean, there are, this, that includes all of your warrant articles. And we could take the unexpected, unexpended fund balance to fund some of those special articles that are in there, one-shot deals. You're going to be asked to support $45,000 tonight, for example, to fund, to put into a fund for a new ambulance purchase, okay? It's a one-time deal. We could use the unexpended fund balance to do that, but we would prefer to have that in as a separate and distinct warrant article, asking for your approval on that because we think it's important that you understand exactly what, what we're expending funds for. So at the end of the day, when we take the unexpended fund balance, which is higher than recommended right now, to use to support some of these warrant articles, that's going to end up bringing your tax rate increase down somewhere around two and a half to three percent. Yeah, exactly. I mean, we could flatten it if we wanted to, but our goal is to keep that around two and a half.
So I'm page 103. Also, today, it's your question. Also, what I'll try to do also here, and confuse you when I use the word articles, but the categories that make up this entire article, that should not be page 95. And what I would like to do, which will help you, is there any question on the selectmen portion, which is the very first category of this whole article? Do you have any specific questions regarding the selectmen's expenses? And that's also further broken down on the following pages, 96, 97, 98, so, okay? Any questions on the selectmen portion?
There seems to be a general, fairly significant increases from the actual 2005 going into 2006. I just wondered if there's a general comment that you can make about, like, the elected office salaries. You know, when we see something significantly under-expended in 2015, why an increase going into the budget for cost of 2016?
Well, as we go through this budget, each of the categories, as the moderators just explained, we'll see line items that are up and line items that are down, there's no question about that. Your overall operating budget proposal is up between five and five and a half percent from last year's operating budget proposal.
That's correct, but it's up 18.9% from the actual of last year. And so my question is, why this significant increase overall of eight, almost 19% from actuals to projected requests?
Well, I think to get specific on that is why we go through these departments by department. The simple, you know, short answer on that is that we ended up returning back into the unexpended fund balance this year, over $200,000 in this kind of thing. So will we be returning that much amount back in next year? It's hard to say, but certainly, we haven't seen us come close to completing our budgeted amount with our actual budget and then obviously don't want to do that. So it's a five to five and a half percent increase from last year's budgeted amount that was approved at this meeting.
Some items, like for example, whether we had this year, you know, our salt and sand budget would probably be, you know, fairly significantly under-placed with this year. You know, we can't, things like weather, we can't predict, so, you know, some items have to have a lot of, kind of, buffer in order to accommodate, you know, situations that would cause overrun or potential overrun. If we ran really tight supply on line item budget, we wouldn't have any flexibility if something didn't come over.
I think that again, if we take these categories category one at a time, that will help explain and offer a down thing. We're on the selectmen category right now, that might help explain that rather than doing it several times, each category, Gina? Excuse me, and I know most people know you, but one thing I mentioned, for those that you don't realize, for the minutes, we have to record all the minutes and where it's very highly recommended to record the person's name on a comment. So I would ask you to please, when you have a question, just state your name loud enough so the clerk can get it in the minutes. I don't really think I mentioned that first, but.
Just a question for Bob, because he was answering that, and I call it the rainy day one. Is there any downside risk to that long-term? If for some reason, if you're removing 200 to 300,000 dollars on that fund every year, is there a downside risk that at some point, something could happen, that that money could possibly be, would have been identified for? Because I know you're trying to keep somewhere around 15% or 12%. Could you explain to the group what that fund is basically borrowing, why that builds up the way it does? Because I don't think people probably understand what it is, but it's extra money that comes in every year through taxes and stuff that isn't used in the budget. You come up with a remainder, but what happens if you don't have that?
Well, it's recommended by our, all accounting, county firms that deal with municipalities, that you have an unexpended fund balance. And the Department of Revenue Administration recommends that you have at least a 5% balance in your unexpended fund balance. Our accountant and most accountants will generally recommend that you keep somewhere between 10 and 13%, actually 12% in the ceiling, in your unexpended fund balance. So last year, we used $100,000 out of our unexpended fund balance and at the end of the calendar year, we returned $200,000 back into the unexpended fund balance because that's how much of the total appropriation last year went unused.
It's also fascinating, we budgeted 471, we got in 730.
So the revenue grew by 300,000, okay. Does that explain that to you? Everybody clear on that?
Now, the quick thing, do you have a portable mic up here you could pass around? Because I tell you a good.
There is a mic up front, when you give it, I'll ask you, I'll ask you to stand there, I'll ask everybody, you can try standing up to help, please speak loudly, and if we can't hear you, I'm going to ask you to come up and use the mic and direct the question to us. Okay, so, does everybody hear me clearly? Okay, so I can use it. All right, I had a question over here, then I'll come back.
Jerry Dougherty, three. The selectmen had three separate budget hearings, where they went over this very extensively and answered some of the questions that are being asked tonight.
I know, we can, we can do that every year, six times a year, we still hear questions and that's the people's right to ask. Any other questions that are on this, on the select category here? Go ahead.
Dave, please. I think the point that, or the thing Gina was trying to ask, and perhaps it wasn't enough, was you generated, my calculation, about $400,000 last year in understanding and incoming excess of what you estimated. So, and now you're going to give back maybe 362,000, that's lovely. But what happens if that doesn't happen in one year or two years? How you control the tax rate from the 22% increase from 5.25? You don't control it, but if you don't generate that, 200,000, 300,000, or 400,000 dollars by overestimating your budget and underestimating your revenues, then what happens? And it seems to me what happens is eventually, you've got to raise your tax rate significantly because you don't have the dollars to offset it. However, from my experience, I know that generally, you're over-budgeting because it's very important lots of run out of money. And we didn't always underestimate revenues quite that much, but that's happened too. That's really the question.
I'm not sure if my first question is or not, but I can tell you again, that if we use the unexpended fund balance to pay for the, what is on some of these warrant articles that are new and one-time expenses, then we would be looking at something like a 5% increase if the warrants were flat, and we would still have more in our unexpended fund balance than is recommended that we keep.
I understand that, but if you're not generating excess funds every year, then you could be in a position where you've done this for a number of years and suddenly you don't have the money to pull you, and that jacks the tax rate way up. That could happen.
That could happen, and I can tell you this, and everybody in business faces this, if they have a big enough crystal ball, we would be in very good shape. But how do you, how do you address that going down? It's going to have to be a year by year by year. Unfortunately, at least in my opinion, we've tested pretty good years for part of our number of years to be able to manage it reasonably. How do we prepare for that in the future unless we want to really start sucking some money away for it? I'm posing that as an answer to all of the questions. So I'll take one more comment on this subject and I'm going to ask again, somebody in this book, yes?
My name is Badger. There are increases in salaries, and I think that issue would be, I would like to have that explained to each department, the selectmen salaries, the fire department salaries, and police department salaries. I think any time there's a salary increase, I think it would be nice to explain that at the town meeting. And you can start with the selectmen salary increase. The explanation for that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
In the past, the elected official salaries have been an issue, and there was a separate warrant article where the town clerk, ex-clector, people felt was underpaid, and it supported the warrant article. And that prompted a discussion around all elected official salaries, site ends if you will. And so, as a result, we ended up increasing all of those amounts by the same percentage that we increased town staff. So that's why you're looking at elected officers' salaries going up. And it represents a 4% increase across, for the selectmen.
Are there any other questions on the selectmen? Okay, I'm going to get to you, don't ask all the time.
I guess I'm troubled by the discussion, and this, I think goes back to what I asked, is the discussion seems to be, what is the budget versus the budget last year? But on this side, you know, the actual salaries last year were 150,000 and the budget was 20,000. So to me, that's a 25% increase, not a 5% increase or 6%. And that's what I don't think you've fully addressed. I suppose it's part of the discussion on the unexpended fund balance, but, you know, I don't, I don't appreciate why we're budgeting so much more than the actual expenditures of last year.
Talking about the selectmen one?
So on the selectmen specifically now.
Selectmen, if I got the selectmen one specifically now.
But I think in general.
We're going to do that by category.
The selectmen one, Bill Lockhart does not take a citation for this. That's one of the reasons for the actual budget being considered less than the budget on that particular item, because Bill does not take his citation. So I call it that under. We have to budget every year, but if we go on to the next selectmen, it's going to be actually doing the same that is per se that Bill does for the town. To explain the selectmen, so. Again, we're talking about the selectmen or not?
Hi, Martha Bennis, just one quick question on the selectmen's office.
Sure.
Can you just, I know we've gone over this a few times in meetings, but just for general, the legal expenses are going from 40,000?
We're not talking about, we're on the, or the selectmen. I'm going to ask to do it by category. And every category, someone has asked to at least address the wage portion, which they'll try to do. But I want to try to keep in line with the categories that you're going to approve. So any other question about the selectmen category of this page that had an ask for? Okay, move on. The next one we'll take up is the town clerk. And the proposed budget is $86,988. Is there any question in the town clerk budget? Again, is there a question on the wage side? I honor as much as I can with the requests of the county. There?
Sarah Clemmons. I was at the budget hearing, and I thought I was under the impression that the town clerk this year was getting no increase because of the increase last year in wage. Is that correct?
They're basically saying they budgeted 4% increase to all the employees for this proposed.
Did I misunderstand at the meeting?
I'm not sure when you heard of the meeting, but all elected officials are now receiving, in this budget, receive the same 4% pay rate increase in this proposed budget.
Any other questions on the town clerk question? Okay, let's move to the next category. Financial administration has proposed $187,823. Is there any question in that category? Again, the wages, I presume, is a 4% factor for the town administration wages?
Sarah Clemmons, again. With this 4% increase, does that also include the burden of the social security and the retirement in that 4%? Or is that as you give the wage, that you add on the social security and the retirement?
It's all included in the benefit package as well.
So is that part of that 4% or does it actually add up to more than 4%?
It actually adds up to more. If you increase the salary, you're going to increase the bike, you're going to increase the social.
So in reality, you're not actually giving a 4% raise, you're giving a higher raise. Could I ask how much of a raise are you giving on the wage? With that increase as well in the social security and retirement?
We give a 4% increase to the rate of pay. And that might spike up or unemployment or some of the other benefits by a corresponding amount. But we have been providing, proposing and have supported at town meetings a 4% pay rate increase for the last three or four years with the exception of the police department, which two years in a row had an 8% pay rate increase.
Yes, just to comment from them. Whatever percentage of the actual pay rate that they recommend, they can't manipulate the FICA. That's all locked in. So whatever percentage they determine, whether it's 0% to 20%, the other items are automatically added to that. They have no control of that. The only thing they have control is if a raise is proposed, the percentage of the raise.
But that's still a burden to the taxpayer in one aspect.
It's a burden to everyone in the world that presents a pay raise to their employees. I am not just saying that that's locked in. The raise is one thing, but all of the other factors, they have no control. Just go on with that.
George Howard, can you show that total in the line numbers or just the raw page here? For the total of pay and burdens?
You want, you want the total of the pay and the burdens that we tax base for? Including the benefits, so to speak? You want that in the warrant in the future? You have a total of everyone in the warrant already. I don't know what you're asking. So we have a good can hear here. Is that, address your answer, George. I know B, but please, if you can. B Davis. I'll do it. Thank you.
I think what George wants is the pay, the benefits, and the burden total.
All of the benefits, including the Hampshire retirement system, health insurance, wages, FICA, Medicare, are all broken down in the budget on page 96.
A lot per employee, is that what you're thinking? You need to clarify the question because what they're saying from the, based on what they're anticipating, the question is, the information is in the warrant. What is not in the warrant that you want that's different than what they're telling you?
What I'm hearing is a gross number for all the burdens.
Please speak up, George. I know those people can hear.
I'm sorry. I was looking for a gross, you show a gross number of burdens on the FICA. What I was asking was, can you apply to individuals? That's the specific number that's impacted on the individual.
So you're asking for a list, an employee name, the rates, the benefits for each individual employee?
This is too hard to do.
I know, so I don't.
If you show office wages as 18,800. What I'm saying is, if my thought was to add the FICA and those things on the full office wages. That's all.
That's going to require some discussion with them as to what you're asking for. There's nothing that we can do tonight, and I guess we don't have the right answer for that tonight. What the answer is, the gross information is in the warrant. It's a different mechanism. I'll take one more comment on that and we're going to move on. Anybody else have a comment on this one?
Hey, Dresh, I'm just curious as to what the increase in the association dues are, can be attributed to? From 4,200 to 11,000?
Your budget is 10,692, or actually 10,000, your budget is 42,000. Whatever you spent, the way you spent, that's what he's asking.
Can you just reshuffle the two categories below that?
Can't hear.
The computer and technology and support went down. We reshuffled those categories so they're back, they're in association dues. We just restructured how, what category we were putting things into.
Like some of the math techniques we used in programs for your office and stuff like that.
They were more dues than computers.
There were dues back then. I guess now they're part of the association dues. Or they were part of the technology.
So it was a reshuffling of some of those subcategories from what they were.
Strange description.
Any other questions? We're on, any more questions on the financial administration category? Okay, we're moving on. Next one is the assessing, revale, tax math updates. It's a zero increase and it's a proposed $40,000 request. Any questions? Okay, good. Next question is legal, and the proposed is $90,000. Is there any question? Yes?
Can you just explain what's going from 20,000 to 90,000, please?
That was the settlement we had with one of our lawsuits. Final outcome of that, we had to pump that number up in order to rectify that situation.
So is there another lawsuit?
I'm sorry?
Bob can't talk. Is there another lawsuit? For 2015?
At the time of the book, yeah.
I'm going to ask again, and again, as clerk, we all know almost everybody. She can't see people, she can't recognize. Either kind of need to state your name, or I'm going to ask you to please stand up. Just trying to make it so she's got the correct minutes for a future question. So please, when you ask a question, speak loud, you can speak your name, or preferably stand up so she can probably know who's talking, but then she can see. When you're sitting here, okay? Another question on legal.
Do you know, Peter, John? During the past few weeks, just response to that case, there was a request made to have legal documents that were supposed to be on file from the two lawsuits, filed in the tax office for 10 years review. We found out, you know, the RSA was out there. So we requested it, we did get it. The question I wanted to get on the legal aspect of it is, one case was settled on December whatever, 2014. It wasn't filed in the office for viewing until a month, a month or so ago. The question is for the attorney. Did the attorney explain to the selectmen at the time of the settlement that that had to be retained, that result had to be retained in the tax office for 10 years for public reviewing? Did you explain that to the selectmen?
Do you know, I got to tell you, that's not the subject matter of this article. What we're asking is to raise money for legal. If you have a question on raising money, we can't go back and debate past situations under the intent of this article or the subject matter.
When can you ask it? Is it part of the financial aspect of the settlement?
All right, I'm going to defer to attorney to see if that's backed up.
The two losses that we're talking about were brought by former town employees. The town's insurance company actually provided a defense to the town through their defense attorneys from Concord or Van Tessa, wherever they're from. So I didn't represent the town of Jackson either of those two losses. I think that that obviously slipped through the cracks. I think, I don't know for sure what the answer to your question is. I suspect that it's probably no. The attorneys for the town through their insurance company did not notify the clerk's office of the RSA, which requires the settlement documents to be placed on file at the town office. As soon as the town realized that that was a legal requirement, then they put them on file. Definitely it was late, but it just slipped through the cracks.
You would have told them, no? Again, and I'm not trying to single out, but I'm going to make sure that what we're debating is to the subject matter of the article. The article is to raise appropriate money, and that's what we're questioning. Thank you, Peter, for clarifying that, but please try to think about that in your comments. Yes?
Question, Sarah Clemmons. Were this legal expensive? Also, does that mean possibly we can clarify? Isn't it, and this was again approached at the budget hearing meetings, that in actuality, the selectmen, not our committees are the ones to, if I understood correctly, are the ones to file these suits? It's not just the ZBA or the planning board or whatever? Do they have to come in front of our selectmen before they go see a lawyer? For the case.
Are you talking about the person that's bringing a suit against the town?
No, I'm talking about if the town finds a problem in one of their committees, that they feel that a zoning ordinance or something is not being done properly? Do they, the committee itself, the ZBA for instance, do they take it to the town attorney or does? Yes?
In addition to the two losses brought against the town by former employees over the past couple of years, last year there was a lawsuit, it was actually an appeal of a ZBA decision filed by a property owner in Jackson who applied for permission to do something, they were denied. So they have the right to appeal that decision to the Carroll County Superior Court, which they did. And I did represent the zoning board with justice in that case, defending their decision. Is that what you're asking?
Is that what you're appealing to?
Right. So in other words, it wasn't our group, the ZBA, that went to court. It was the person that went to the ZBA and did not get what they felt they would do.
And then they appealed it and the town attorney defended the town's position. Any other questions on legal? Okay, I'm going to move on. Planning board is proposing $3,500. Any questions on planning board? Okay, great. Okay, the zoning board. The zoning board expense is being proposed is $2,500. Is there any question on the zoning board? Good? Okay. General government, parks and buildings. Okay? The proposed total is $30,200.
Got to go one page at a time.
Any questions? Good, okay? The next one is cemetery. And it's a $9,550 request, exactly as last year. Any questions? All right? Next question, property liability insurance. $56,500. Any questions?
I'll pass all the beginning aside.
Okay? Next question, building inspection. Any questions? Next category, police department. Any questions?
What page is that?
Let me, I've got two people with hands up. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Lundy McVeigh. What page are you on?
On page 95 is the category breakdown. We're still on Article 6. And we're talking about the breakdown of the total operating budget of the town. Page 95. 95 has the line item total. The 96, 97, 98 after that has the individual breakdowns of that line item. I know it's confusing, but it is what we have to work with. Okay, yes, go ahead.
Do you know, Peter, John? Is that the addition of a fourth police officer in 2016?
We should let the part-time.
At that price?
We have three part-time, three full-time and one part-time at this time, I believe. That's the current stat.
I'm sorry, you're increasing by $50,000 or so. And that's not, that's a part-time employee, not a full-time?
No, first off, let me correct myself. We have three full-time officers and two part-time officers currently in the budget. I don't know that there is, is there another request of another more personnel? Is that the question? What, your question is? Let me, is your question, the total dollar raise for the appropriation or the personnel number of people?
The total dollar amount change from what they spent last year to what they're planning on spending next year for personnel. Is an increase of what, approximately $50,000? I don't have to calculate. But that's 30,000?
Okay, folks, do you speak up and you got to fall?
You projected $50,000 for the last year's expenditures, right?
Oh, yes.
That $50,000 appears to be a fourth policeman. No, if it isn't, who's getting $51,000? I just have a question. It looks kind of weird.
Part of that's a 4% raise. And I believe we've increased the hours for that part-time position to a certain extent, but it's not full-time. Is that correct, Peter?
That is correct. Do you know, what it really breaks down to is the further funding of the two part-time officers would come out to $30,000. And the rest of it would be, who's going to raise this came to be a full-time. So we only have three full-timers, and we have brought them to roster for part-time. And we brought them from basically working a 10-hour obligatory roster for the year into what they can work 1,000 hours, which is more helpful.
20 hours apiece, which is one full-time employee.
Like 20 hours apiece, which is one full-time employee to round them together. Okay, just, I just wanted to get, so it's actually a full-time employee, but working half-time.
Broken down into different.
It's okay.
I wanna make sure you get the right answer, Dino.
Oh, I got it.
Okay, anybody else have any question on the police department? Yes.
This isn't, Tish Hanlon. It isn't really a question specifically about the police department, but I want to understand what we're looking at here. So this is, the 2015 budget is the budget that was proposed last year that was, went up 15%, but it really only went up 2 or 3%, correct? You were saying that because there was so much overreach, that you had money set aside.
The unreserved, we used the unreserved fund and knocked out of the budget.
So now we're, now we're raising it another 22% on top of that 15%?
Our proposed budget, this year is between 5 and 5.5% of the proposed budget that we put before you a year ago. And in addition, we have more warrant articles this year for needs that weren't identified and in the budget as more articles last year, for example, the injuries. And so basically, the operating budget that is $100,000 above the proposed budget last year, which is between a 5 and a 5.5% increase, you can take a look at the increased police department budget and the increased legal expenses budget to find that $100,000 increase.
So that was kind of away from police department. Anybody else on police department category, questions?
I guess I'd be interested in just the justification for the increase, whether it's increase in hours, increase in pay, why, address the moderator, whoever wants to address it, but why is there an increase in hours or pay in the police department?
Chief, would you like to address that slightly?
Why specifically are we increasing pay in the police department? Pay where the, where the?
It's just a justification for the budget change. I think it's a reasonable request for every department head to justify the town with significant increase, and I'd just like to hear.
Well, I don't know that I can give a, you know, very quick answer to it. We covered it pretty much in depth in all the workshops. I can dance it all to school. Basically, historically, we've had a part-time program that could only work 8 to 10 hours a year, which covered their yearly certification requirements. They couldn't really go out on the street, they couldn't really add to the police department and its force and its flexibility out there in terms of enforcing laws that they don't do on a regular basis. So it was my intent, it is my intent, to get them more involved, keep their training up to date, therefore give them more hours to work. They can work, the part-time program, the part-time officers can work up to 13 hours per year by statute. I'm only asking for them to work 1,000 hours this year and to eventually get to that $1,300 to make that part-time program effective and helpful to the town. Safer for the full-time officers who are out there during busy times, certainly safer for the officers who work part-time to work those full 1,300 hours in order to keep their certification. In conjunction with that, our part-time police officers have been paid equivalent to, you know, just for example, a dispatcher who doesn't acquire all the training and specialized training and that type of thing. Our part-time officers, I am looking to increase their wages by $2 per hour, which is how we came up with the 17 and the increase, which equals out to about $300 a year. That will address the part-time program and the fault of that increase. And we look at the officers, the full-time officers and their, three years ago, this town and Carl Meyer agreed that the police officers here, the full-time, the three full-time officers that were here, and the selectmen approved an 80% increase for the next three years. That only happened for two years. So I was the only one that was affected by that, but obviously my pay increase has a position, a position, the new position that I took. So we're still, we're still looking at cost of living increase, and we're still looking at my officers being at the very bottom of what police officers are paid at an entry level, let alone anybody with any experience in the whole county. So we're still playing catch-up in terms of the police officers and their wage. And when you look at the amount of activity that we had in 2015, those numbers doubled and sometimes they tripled, signifying their activity out on the street is needed. So yeah, that's why I asked for their wages.
Can you speak up, Ann? We can't hear you.
Did you say that the criminal activity has doubled or tripled?
No, not. The activity of my officer has doubled, has brought back, brought forth, our numbers have doubled and tripled in terms of their activity. Criminal activity, the numbers that we're talking about, when you look at our statistics, representative of investigations as well as patrol and calls for service, those have doubled or tripled.
They've doubled, I guess criminal was a lot more, but the number of calls we get has doubled and tripled or?
Not one, not when you break it down like that. When you say calls, I interpret that as calls for service. Our calls for services are up, maybe by two, I might have to go back and look at the numbers. But I know that last year, just for example, the number of arrests that we had in 2014, there was 17. Last year we're at 35. So that's, that's the number of arrests that were made. You know, our annual calls were at 15, and last year they were at 44. All of the police activity that we see, that we record, both for the state department and the town, we're seeing a steady increase in the amount of activity that they're out there doing, and bringing that back and going to the public statistics.
I think we tend to compare ourselves to little towns of 800 or 1,000 people or something like that. We've got a huge population of second homeowners, we've got a huge population of people who are tourists and traveling through the area. I think our police is doing a great job, and I'm really grateful.
Any other comments? I just want to add that, I can tell you this, in all the years that I've been in emergency services and contributed five police ambulances, 25 years in the ambulance squad, I can't tell you there was a call, a rare call in Jackson in the last 30 years, that we haven't had police officers pretty much come out anytime, any day. I can personally tell you that is not the case in some neighboring towns. When their duty is over, their shift is over, they're home, do well again. So I think all our emergency services, fire, police, ambulance, whatever, we are very fortunate that those guys go when they're not even on duty, if they get the call, they're responding. And I think we should be very proud of that. I'd just like to make this comment that honest. Recognition of all our emergency services guy and our, all our workers, our highway squad, they're out there. Okay, any other questions on police? Okay, moving on. Fire tracks and ambulance service, proposed $13,138. Any questions? Okay?
Question. The actions last year, again, same question, 4,800, and we're jumping to 13,000.
A lot of that is because we've improved our collections at the ambulance level, so we've saved a lot of money in that area.
So that tells me that the budget request should go down.
Again, one of the, that's one of the reasons we save money, but again, things have gone up. I've been in poor training for the ambulance, and we've also had a whole different set of batteries and radio that have to be updated as well. That's where a lot of that increase is going forward, in the bullet frame.
I just add, going back to what I just said, 25 years of service on that squad, if you look at the operating cost of the ambulance service total by Jackson, yes, it's about $200,000 a year expense. We're paying $13,000, we got a bargain. Any other questions on that?
On that, other departments, you know, split out, I'm sorry, Larry Garland, split out lines for wages and so forth, but this ambulance is not. Does that mean there are no personnel costs? Is it all equipment cost?
Contracted service, we split requirements in accordance. There is a breakdown in salary, if you want to see salary.
There is an operator, but it's a lot, they break that whole budget down.
So the contract.
Page 35 is a breakdown of salary, if you want to see salary.
So what the budget has is the contracted amount, but the contract includes the personnel costs, that's what we're seeing.
Yes, basically, we pay 40% of the cost, I'll pay 60%, but the majority of the actual operating expense of the squad is paid for from revenue from calls and donations. Any other questions on ambulance? Okay? Part of that. $210,236.
Save for. Angus, back.
Oh, excuse me.
Addition of the increase in wage. The increase in wages represents a 4% pay rate increase as well as related directly to the corresponding draw in the salary line item of the highway administration as well. So when you're looking at your budget categories on page 19, you're taking 95, thank you, you're looking at a 21% increase in proposed percentage change for your fire department, and you're looking at a 14% decrease in the highway department. And that is because we have a fire code inspector who is phasing out and retiring and the fire code inspection duties that we had budgeted for in the past, and you can see on page 97, under fire, fire code inspector wages have dropped because our fire code inspector is phasing out in a retirement way. And so we had to find a way to cover those fire code inspector duties, and so we increased the hours for the chief, because he was the only one in the department qualified to do the work, and that bumped him into full-time status. So that's why you see the insurance drop in the highway department and salary drop in the highway department. And you see those corresponding increases in the fire department, because we now have a full-time chief in the fire department. And $89,000 is kind of market price for a full-time fire chief.
And that's all, all the fire wages, not just the chief.
That's broken down, there's a complete list of all the wages, I believe, other than wages on, just want to make sure I answered his question first, and I'll get to you. That, that $89,000, what you're saying, Angus, is that's, that's the entire wage budget for the whole department. Every, every member that responds to a call is paid for the call. It's a paid call department. The state of New Hampshire doesn't recognize a volunteer department if somebody receives $1. So that, if that helps you explain that, that is total wages for the entire department, including the fire chief's wages. Correct? Yes. Does that answer your question? I got several, I don't want to keep, I don't want to hold things up, but I don't want to not answer your question. Okay, I believe, let's go here, I'll get around the room.
Sarah Clonan, could you please tell me the wage that the fire chief is getting and the benefits that he's getting?
I think it's, what do I want to say? 25, something like that. And then the benefit, the full-time benefits, 30?
Wage is 39,000.
I'm sorry.
Wait, hold on, I'm trying to answer, I'll get to you in a minute.
So am I correct in understanding that his wage is $45,000 for 30 hours a week, and his insurance is $39,000 a week?
Hold on, no, I don't think that is. She's asking, is the wage 45 or?
The wage is 39. And then the extra retirement and health insurance are broken out individually.
Yeah, the wage is 39,000 a year, and the benefits, retirement and what have you, are broken out individually. And I guess, I'll get you. Okay, all right, let's, just an explanation. Basically, what the selectmen have done is they have increased the hours responsible for the fire chief. Okay? The fire chief's responsibilities of hours increased. One, in the state of New Hampshire, once an employee reaches 30 hours a week employment, they are by law entitled to all the benefits of a full-time employee. So those benefits, basically what they're saying is, his increase in wage because of increase in hours, his benefit package that he was receiving as a road agent are now transferred to the fire department. Because he was sharing, the one person was sharing two responsibilities before, they've separated that. Does that help explain that a little bit? Okay, I think there was a question up here somewhere.
No, I was just trying to understand, page, Kelly, in the test case, sorry, page 108, and what does the number 62,672 represent? Has to, record page number, is that last year's? Last year, yes.
Last year's salary and road, and fire.
Both road agent's salary and fire chief's salary.
Thank you.
All right, just a second, I'll get to you again. Go ahead, we'll get to that.
Jerry, after three. Some of that salary is also replacing, as you pointed out, the code fire enforcement officer. It's not just, his duties aren't just the chief of the fire department, which is also, by the way, nominated by the rest of the firemen, and I think we're very lucky to have someone who's grown up in town that can serve these responsibilities. And not to belabor this point, but the selectmen and the department heads, including the chief of police and the road agent and the fire department, explained all these things very fully in the budget hearings. And so my way of thinking, if that's where these questions want to be asked, that's where these, and I know some of the people asking these questions were at those hearings, and I wonder why this is being done now.
Because they got. I'll take, be, aim as I can see where you can, go ahead and ask to them.
Selectmen, this evening, I asked Mr. Wadia, and he said, salary is 39, grand total is 77.
Okay, is this a question or?
No, I'm here.
$39,000 of salary.
Grand total is 77.
The grand total of?
His benefits.
Everything, 77,000, okay.
That's what he told me, I'm doing.
Okay, all right, that's a, that's a point. I had another question.
Hi, Martha Davis. No question in paying any of these people the money, we just clarified where we're going.
And I, and I believe, I think you're trying to answer all those concerns in the explanation.
So just a quick question, do we have, if Jay has been a key to the chief fund, do we have a new road agent, or is that?
We do.
How is that working?
We do. I'll let Bob answer next.
We do have a new road agent, he's Pat Kelly, he was number two in charge of the highway department, and he is now a full-time road. One of the reasons he was elected to get his candidacy, to start some law.
Stand up and think about that.
That's right, that would be. That's right, that would be, he's not as outgoing as some of the people I've seen. Patrick Kelly is a road agent, yes, he's been with the highway department for, I suppose, for six years. He was promoted to that position when Jay put the gun in that question. Any other questions? Okay, go ahead.
Um, just a quick question, Julie, when we did my benefits, I thought the paperwork said that to have health insurance, we need to work thirty-two hours, and retirement was required by state thirty-five hours. Just, unless it's changed since, I don't know. Fire is, fire is category, they have to work thirty? Okay, so that's.
Okay, I would say the police and fire come to a different category than, than this. Any other questions on?
Yes, Sarah, I just wanted to know if we're getting, or the fire code inspector is leaving, and, but we're still budgeting eighty-five hundred for that, is that?
Yeah, I, I said that he backed out his hours by half and in the process of phasing out completely and retiring from the business. So, he's doing us a favor by staying on in a reduced capacity this year as we transition into assigning those duties to the chief.
And I will comment that our, that our current fire inspector at part-time, who was our only fire inspector, he has a tremendous experience level in the fire service. He was chief in Berlin for many years, he was a certified New Hampshire fire instructor. He instructed firefighters all over state of New Hampshire. We got a really good guy there, a fire chief that's learning the codes, has got a job to really replace him when he finally retires. So, it's a, people don't realize what our fire inspector's knowledge was and what he was able to do the last few years. So, we're not, we, we won't miss it because we got a good candidate, but he's got a job to do.
Just, Sarah, on, on that other thing, you know, like, Jeanette, as we've talked about before, we put in eighty-five hundred dollars. We may not spend one penny of that because there wasn't a need for it, but we have to budget that because we don't know, there might be a, you know, a grand new hotel that comes in and it's, you know, something we need to have some professional advice, maybe at the state level, so we have to put that money in there. We may spend none of it, which is to be nice, in which case we're.
Any other questions on the fire department? Moving on. Okay. Emergency management, eight thousand thirty-nine dollars. Is there any question? Our next category is highway administration. Two-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars. Is there any question? Okay, highway and streets. Three-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand-seven-hundred dollars. Any questions?
Jeff Man, I, I just got a question on the, uh, plowing, maintenance of the sidewalk on the loop. Uh, ninety-nine percent of it is really good, I'm doing a great job. I didn't even know the road agent was like in front of me. But, uh, but the part that isn't, is the two bridges. And so, I'm wondering what it would cost extra to be really meticulous about getting the whole thing because, I don't know, if you're walking a Route sixteen section and you're going over the Ellis Bridge there, over the Ellis River, and then there's a tractor trailer coming south, and then there's a trash truck coming north, and you jump down. You're over there hanging there, you've got to think.
You go.
And the only trouble is, I just jumped up on something flat, and, but it's not like that, it's forty-five degrees and it's ice. So, a few years ago, I think, would remember, we had a discussion about the sidewalks, and it was the will of the town to, to clear them because a lot of people like to use them. Not only the residents, but the second homeowners and everything. So, I guess, what would it cost to be meticulous about getting that done? That and, and the other thing, the other thing would be the sanding, because we've had the kind of winter where we build a lot of ice, and I guess the timing between when the ice forms and when it gets sanded. Bring that down, you know, instead of a week or two. Okay, that's all.
Jeff, is, is that, you're asking, can we get better, what is the, actually, question?
The question is, I, I guess the question is really with people here, is it, is it important for you to have this thing a hundred percent? Because, you know, it'll only take one person, it hasn't happened, so nobody's worried about it. But it only take one person to get hit on Route sixteen going across that Ellis River Bridge, and those legal expenses are going to go way up.
Okay, Jeff. Bob was going to try to, well.
Well, I can tell you as far as the sidewalk clearing goes in the winter, that it's my understanding that this topic has come up before, and town has looked into purchasing the equipment that would be required for us to keep our sidewalks clear. And I believe, and, uh, the incoming or outgoing road agent can correct me if I'm wrong, but the cost on that equipment is well above fifty thousand dollars. And so, at that point, the town decided not to make that kind of investment in a sidewalk-only clearing machine that basically would, would have a mile of use. Instead, we contracted out the sidewalk clearing services to a business that has one of those machines. I think we spent about four or five thousand dollars a winter to clear those sidewalks. And so, it's, you know, he's, it's a contracted service, he's usually here within a day or two of the storm, sometimes his equipment breaks down, like equipment will do. Um, but that's, that's, that's the difference right there, to contract four or five thousand dollars a winter or to spend, I actually think it's marked closer to a hundred thousand dollars what those machines go for in the.
I, I believe Patrick wants to fit a comment about the, the cost of that, is that what you were trying to?
Yeah, and I know, I'm also, I'm going to look at Gino. I remember when Gino did a lot of research on the cost of those machines, we had this conversation a long time ago. Did you? So, just the machine is a super expensive, and then you've got to have somebody that can run it during the storm. So, the highway department's all out plowing during the storm, so there's nobody there to run it. And you really have to run it during the storm. This year, it's been a horrible year for, year for ice. When the sidewalk's been slippery, I've gone out and sanded it, and, but because you have rain and ice and rain and ice, it, it washes off. I mean, I can, I'll certainly put it into the memory bank, and I'll try and make sure that they're definitely sanded better. But, you know, I mean, you sand it, and ten minutes later, it's just like it was before you sanded it because of the rainy, icy year that we've had. And it's, uh, Gene Brown is the person that we've contracted because he is the only person that has a machine that's even remotely capable of doing it. And it takes a piece of special equipment, he's got a skid steer with a snowball. Uh, some of the businesses in town won't let him snowball on their property, so that makes it difficult. So, there's sections in there, the town crew can't get to it, by a certain such and time, it doesn't get done, and then ice builds. So, it's kind of a, it's a big, it's an interesting little situation.
I've got several hands up, I'm going to recognize Gino, and I'll start over here.
Gino, do your job. Uh, we priced that out about six years ago, I think it was a hundred and forty-seven thousand, but there was a sicklebar attachment, which I mean, you trimmed the edges around the pole.
Okay, I think we've got Fred next.
Fred Henry. I think when he said the bridge on Route sixteen, that's state highway. If some of you guys went and talked to state highways, Kenny Crowe from them guys, they cleaned the bridges, and they probably would clean that bridge.
It is the state highway.
That bridge, the whole five-mile circuit is, is state, is state roads. But they would be glad to clean that, I think he'd be glad to help clean the bridges. They usually clean bridges, you know, during the, beginning of the storm, you see the loader up and down the road, he's helping the highway cleaning the bridges, and he's trying to clean the intersection. But if I was a sidewalk, goes, you can pile the whole sidewalk, but people still run out in the road. They're not going to stop them. They don't run on the sidewalk. I don't care, you watch them. They're going to give a load. They don't run on the sidewalk, they don't like the sidewalk, they're going to run on the highway. And you're watching the morning, every morning, you're watching on the bus.
We got, I'll take Jerry, and then I'll, I'll move on, and Jerry, Jerry Drucker.
You say the state is responsible?
I use that loop a lot and have it very often run in.
Guys. Let it talk.
I use that loop a lot and very often time myself in doing it. And the only thing I could suggest is rather than spending a boot of more money, I would wait for that dump truck and whatever else the truck was in the way to go by before I would step into the street. Then I'd step in the street. I did it for forty years. There's not that much traffic on that road, they'd have to wait a long time.
I think you're right, Jerry. You can't see the truck until it.
Guys, guys, I don't want to, thank you, but I'm not going to have that. So, correct it to here. I think we heard the point. Any other questions on this? Yes, sir.
Wayne Peterson. This is a discussion of about ten minutes that has no bearing on our budget, the light of.
It, it actually is incorporated, I believe, into that category, unfortunately. I agree with you, but it's in that category and that, that's my correct.
No suggestion of an up or down or anything?
Exactly. I understand, I understand. I'm just giving, it's a, it's a very personal thing that we've had many conversations. I, I love it, and I'll, I'll one more comment. So, it's open for question. Frank, you've had your hand up several times, I don't want to apologize.
Well, I mean, yeah, is there, I know, I understand we're using contracted services, but is there any merit to spending more money with the contractor to clean this more regularly or go back to second contract on the bridge? Because it is a legitimate, I think.
I'll defer that to him to answer. There's really just, it's a very, very, very limited pool of people to pull from that can clear the sidewalk. And he is one of the only ones that Jay and I really want.
And he's from where?
He's from Santa Monica.
So, I'm just saying, have him come back, spend more money. That's a two thousand.
I think, but the issue with the bridges, I think, is that it's too narrow, is that possible?
You really can't get on the bridge with a piece of equipment, that's really, you're on a loader, and you're in this way, you're on a skid steer in this way, so that's why it's on the forty-five.
I'm going to take one more comment, I'm going to.
This year, you got a new, new machine which is a little bit wider than his old one, that's why the bridge used to be snowballed off, you can't fit on them now.
Okay, I'm going to move on to the next category. If there's any other questions of this category that is not related to the sidewalk, I'll take it, so you are going to have a spot. Okay? Street lighting, ten thousand dollars. Is there any questions? Okay? Solid waste disposal, one-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-six dollars. Is there any questions? Yes.
Because we're, maybe degrees, is that for that big personnel decrease, or what?
Those that are about a pound or eight.
Yeah, they're not ours. They said salaries.
Any other questions? Okay. Annual control, thirteen-hundred-and-forty-six dollars. Is there any question? All right. Public welfare, six thousand dollars. Library appropriations, sixty-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars. Recreation and parks, nineteen-thousand-two-hundred dollars.
Bill, there's one question.
Go ahead.
Wendy McFay, question, library appropriations, is that for both the libraries or just the new libraries?
We only have one library. We're talking about the old library building, that, that does not, no longer serves as a library.
All right. This is all. This is the library, it's not the inside. Okay, getting back, okay, Fox and Recreations was nineteen-thousand-two-hundred dollars. Any questions there? Debt service, debt service, sixty-four-thousand-five-hundred. Tenants interest paid, one thousand dollars.
Why do you carry, Jeanette, why do you carry this, man?
Why do I carry it? Taxant. She wants to know why do you carry it?
We're not using it? Is it, is it something we have to carry as a contingency? What? What do you have in mind of interest?
It's a precautionary.
In the event something happens and they need to borrow some money, they need some money in the case.
Yeah.
Okay, there's, there was another hand up.
I'm sure that's exactly correct. The tax notification is, if we need money right away.
In here.
If we need money right away, we can get it. With the bank that we have, we can do our normal daily basis, which we keep bank, would take us a couple of months to get money if we needed it right away. With the, um, tax, the stipulation that we have the line register with Los Angeles Bank, we can get it in twenty-four hours if there's emergency. So, we've never used it, hopefully we'll never have to use it, but that's what's there. The town appropriated for the same place a hundred years ago, and we want to put it in place here.
Okay. Any other questions? You have another one?
I have a question before we move on.
Okay. So, I, I apologize, that's a long-winded thing, but that's the nuts and bolts of our operating budget, so it's, it usually is a time and manner, and thank everybody for their cooperation on it. Before we call for the actual vote on the required, requested amount of one million nine-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety-two, is there any overall question? We have one over here.
Jeanette.
That's a question, um, question statement, and then I'm going to make a motion. Um, I'm troubled by the fact that we're moving from one-point-six-seven million to a request of one-point-nine-eight million, eighteen, almost nineteen percent increase. And with that in mind, I move that we amend Article Six to one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars, eighty-eight thousand dollars, four-hundred-and-ninety-two of reduction to the operating budget of two-hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, you've got to write that number down, Steve. You've got to write it down.
It's a reduction of two-hundred thousand.
Are you making that as a motion at this point?
I did make that as a motion yesterday.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor that's been, a motion and a second, that we amend the total appropriation of one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand dollars, eighty-eight-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars. We amend that down by the amount of even two-hundred thousand dollars. Yeah. I have a motion and a second. This is how this works. I'm going to ask questions and comments on the motion. We will vote on the motion. If the motion carries, we'll vote on, we'll go back to the, to the actual appropriation as amended. If the motion is defeated, I'll go back to the original proposal. Is there any questions on the motion? To reduce the overall operating budget by two-hundred thousand dollars is the motion, is there questions? Yes, please.
Hey, Lynn Strouch-Bowers, um, if that number is agreed upon, then how does that get funded up? Where does that money come from?
That is up to the selectmen. They have the authority by statute. You can try to amend those, those line item budgets, but it goes back to the bottom line. They can, if this motion passes, they cannot increase the town operating budget by that any more than the amount we appropriate. They're locked in. And if things happen, and they have to do some maneuvering, they're going to have to find two-hundred thousand within all of those categories to be able to do that. That's how that works. They can't overspend without going to DRA, and I believe our legal counsel backed up and getting approval, and I believe that would require a special community. Is that, in fact, is that finance saving of the hour's sale or online trading? So, that, just making that comment. So, questions on the motion, and I have several. I'm going to start over here, and I'll try to work my way around. Go ahead, Jerry.
The amount she's recommending to reduce the budget seems arbitrary. She wasn't at the budget hearings. The selectmen and the department heads have done a lot of work to come up with this budget. I strongly recommend that the town not approve this amendment.
Okay, uh, there was someone here in the middle, and then I've got three or four over here. Okay, go ahead.
Alan Brooks. I, I guess my, my question is to the person who made this, this motion. She's, she is recommending a certain amount of money. She obviously feels that that money, that this should be reduced somewhere. Where does she think that this should be reduced? Because I think that that needs to be calculated.
Okay, I'll, I'll, we can do a quick answer. The problem's gonna be, I don't, I don't know. Janette, are you prepared to answer that quickly?
It is not my position to make that decision. That's up to the selectmen. There are, however, some categories where I could make suggestions, if you will.
Can I interrupt a second? That's only, that's only her recommendation. And the selectmen will have to maneuver whatever they see fit to operate the town. This is only her recommendation, but she's gonna answer.
The forty percent across the board pay rates for, um, elected and employees for the second year in a row, when social security has been frozen at zero, when cost of living is less than, what, one or two percent inflation, uh, four percent increase for two years in a row seems to me to be excessive. The legal fees, you know, I think that's a little bit of a, and everybody's not gonna pay it, but it's, that's a problem. The increase in staffing in the, the police and the fire, um, the rationale sounds logical, but it's a lot of money, folks. Our tax rates have gone up, you know, like, it, it's, it's a huge impact on each and everyone's. We enjoy the town, we enjoy the benefits. I have nothing against the fire department or the police or the highway departments. It's just a lot of money. And when we under spent last year, we under spent the year before to ask for that much money, I don't see the justification.
Yeah, I'm gonna recognize, selectmen, at this point from now, if we have a couple people have to talk.
Well, I just wanna make sure that I can respond to, um, the claim that your taxes are, are going up. Um, your, the historical tax rates that, uh, go back to nineteen ninety-six are on page twenty-seven of the town report. In nineteen ninety-six, the municipal tax rate was four dollars. In two thousand and fifteen, it was four dollars and thirty-two cents. We, we've taken a look at the increases that have taken place through the years, and there are some ebbs and flows in there. But that's about an average of a, of a percent a year that your, your municipal tax rates have gone up. So, I'm sitting up here tonight to make the case that your money has been responsibly managed and that we are providing the services that you direct us to provide, to the best of our ability, as efficiently as we can. And your tax rates over the last twenty years bear that out.
Okay. Any comments, questions on the amendment that, go ahead, Janette, you have to talk.
The one problem with that, uh, Gina Pita John, one problem with that statement is the fact that the, the real estate in the town has increased in value substantially, which even under a flat tax rate moves the amount of money up that comes into the town problems. So that isn't really, it's a little disingenuous. Uh, but, and, and going back over a number of years, you know, in two thousand and four, five, six, we only had two places. And I, I love cops, don't get me wrong, but I mean, we're going into the fourth category, the dollar amounts. You know, we had a smaller road group some of the time during the, during two thousand, and that's beginning to grow a little bit. So, I mean, it's something to really look at, and you know, just don't accept a number. Well, it's up seventeen percent because I had seventeen percent. We were never taking other than one year back, I think, two thousand and five and six, we took, we gave back four hundred thousand dollars to the town out of that fund, and it screwed the numbers up. But since then, in the following five or six years, two or three years, they didn't take anything out of that discretionary fund, the town, the slide. In the last three or four years, we've been taking money every year, which concerns me because that means probably that the budgeting looking forward hasn't been what it should be, because at the end of the year, they bring that money back in to balance the next year's debt. That's a concern to me. I'm not an accountant, but it looks a little bit like it could be a problem if we had a sudden drop in real estate value in some, I don't know, but something to look at.
Wayne, Peter, I believe you're next.
Uh, Peter Betson. Um, I, I would concur with Jerry, uh, and thinking that this is just, this seems very arbitrary to me, and what my concern is it completely ties the selectmen's hands in running the town in an effective way. To try to administer a cut of this size makes deciding about where those cuts happen. They tell you where all the increases and decreases are in this book, but if this gets passed, those cuts are up to them. So they can go, it can go one place, it can go another, it can go a percentage. That is a very difficult job to do. I mean, I wish it were the other way around. We say we have an extra two hundred thousand dollars, but we don't. I guess what I would ask you to do is to not think about, you know, Jackson versus other communities, but do you get the value for your tax dollars and services to this town? And I think across the board, this town gets that. We get tremendous value for our service. Our taxes are not out of control, in my estimation. They're, as, as Bob pointed out, they're lower adjusted to inflation than they were twenty years ago. There aren't many towns in this, in this state that can say that. Um, I think we get a tremendous value, whether we base it on real estate or not. I think this town is well-served by its departments and the selectmen, and I just think, I would recommend defeating this amendment.
Move the question. I'm gonna take one more comment, so we're still over for debate. Yes, Kathy?
Hi Kathy, I'm Fredner, and, um, we have a lot of new people that have moved into town, second homeowners. We have a lot of revenue coming in from our taxes from those people to offset the two hundred thousand dollars that she's talking about. Um, we have a lot of people in our town, volunteers, our, all our highway departments, everybody that works for this town works together. And, um, like Jerry said and Peter said, so I'm gonna put a lot of effort into coming up with a budget to satisfy everybody and to keep it low. Nobody's paying a lot of taxes here in this town compared to the rest of the state. We have very low taxes. We're very lucky to have that. Um, it kind of, I think that we should go back to where it was before at one ninety-eight, whatever it is.
We haven't got to the, yeah.
I'm sorry, okay.
We're on the amendment.
I strongly vote against what Janette has to say. Or we'll be using the tax to tan the bill before we know it.
All right, I'm gonna, last comment, then I'm gonna.
Joyce Allen. I go to some of the budget hearings, and, you know, I feel fairly well informed. Um, everybody can't do that, so, you know, I kind of resent a little bit tonight. I'm hearing, I'm feeling like I'm being scolded for if I question anything, and I do question some things. I feel like I'm being scolded for that, and I feel like I shouldn't, I shouldn't question anything. Um, that's, that's not a good feeling. Uh, I'm, uh, that's, that's my feeling and my comment.
I'll, I'll, I'll answer that. I've certainly, personally, I've certainly tried to give everybody an ample opportunity to talk.
I'm saying you're right.
And it's not personalities with anybody here, and I'm not gonna allow that, but I, I, I feel bad that you, I understand what you're saying, and I hope that's not the intent from here. I don't personally think that's the intent from anyone. I think we tried, I bet a couple people say, and move things on. I'm very much, this especially, I have a lot, a lot of extra discussion. You're talking about the nuts and bolts of operating the town, so it's important, okay? I did say that was my last comment. Frank, I'm gonna give you one minute.
Less than that. And I think the, one of the issues that's driving that is the current practice of voters being much more than we spent in the prior year. And, and that's where, I mean, I've asked one or two questions today, trying to understand why we do that, and I've yet to really hear a, a compelling answer on why we under spent last year's budget by so much, and we have to increase this year's budget by even a greater amount, but we've always under spent the budgets by substantial amounts.
And I guess I'd try to say an answer to that real quick. I think that's been a trend for a long time, but I personally think that's wise budgeting. You never know what's gonna come in, but we've always been able to, for a lot of years now, as Bob has stated, we've been able to do that, and we've successfully been able to put that money back in. Now, Dave Mason had a comment earlier. Someday that may not happen. I don't think we've got a crystal ball if we determine that. We've been fortunate to be able to budget in anticipation of all the needs. We've been able to turn money back. You do this, I'm just saying, whether it's, it's your decision, it's a majority rule, and I'm very neutral on it, but I just wanna be clear that you people, they have to make this bottom line work. If it doesn't work, they can't just say, we'll go out and borrow some more money. They are locked in to whatever you vote, vote on this article. I just wanna make sure everybody's aware of that. With that, I'm going to ask for a vote on the amendment. We'll vote on the amendment. Reminder, the amendment is to reduce the operating budget of the town by two hundred thousand dollars. A yes vote on the amendment passes the amendment. A no vote defeats the amendment. If it's passed in the yes amount, we will go back and vote on the entire operating budget that has now been reduced by two hundred thousand dollars. A no vote, we'll go back and vote on the budget as proposed. Everybody clear on that? Is it a question on my explanation? Cause I'm not going back to Congress.
On the method of, uh, getting the vote? I'm going to request a written vote. Written down.
Okay, I, I'm gonna, if you have five people that will present that, I'll take it, but if not, I'll go by show of hands first. Okay? So I'm gonna call the vote. This is what I'm gonna do. A yes vote is for the amendment, a no vote is against the amendment. The left-hand side of the room, I'm gonna, when I, when I'm ready, I'm gonna ask you to please raise your hand and keep your hands up while we can take the quick count. And I'm gonna ask the selectmen, the clerk, and we'll come up with a number, and then we'll do the right-hand side. Okay, is everybody clear? All those in favor of the amendment on the left-hand side of the room, raise your hand, please. Okay. All those, go ahead, down. All those on the right-hand side of the room, raise your hand if you're favor of the amendment. So we got sixteen yes. Left-hand side of the room, all those opposed to the amendment, raise your hand. Okay. I don't need to, but, okay? All those on the right side, opposed, raise your hand. The amendment's defeated, fair enough, okay? That's your, that's your prerogative, and I hope everybody's good that they've had their opportunity to talk. This is very important. I'm now going to ask for a vote. All those in favor?
Point of order.
No, what's your question? My call?
We had a discussion on one amendment. Aren't you supposed to say, is there any more discussion?
If you would let me read that, I was gonna ask one more time. Please let me read this. I'm gonna ask for a vote. There are all those in favor who are opposed for the original amount of one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-two. Is there any more discussion that we have not heard on this? Yet.
I'd like to make a motion that we increase the operating budget by ten thousand dollars. Maybe we can't spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on, on a machine so the town can do it, but we can certainly, uh, increase the amount that we pay a separate contractor, which I think that we brought up, it was four or five thousand dollars. We increase by ten thousand dollars, and then, uh, that would be three times the amount, and maybe we'd have to save.
Um, before anybody makes a second on that, I'm gonna interrupt that. I think the selectmen wanted to make a comment on that. John?
I think, I think we.
This might eliminate you needing that amendment.
I think we could probably find money to accommodate.
Thank you.
Is everybody happy with that? The selectmen are gonna look at ways they can increase the maintenance of the winter time from sidewalk. Yes, Paul?
Please consider the practicality of spending more time on the sidewalks. Unless you have that equipment during the storm, you're gonna have buildup, you're gonna have ice, you're, you're gonna have a minimal impact on doing that, on, on making those sidewalks clear. So I don't want anyone leaving here tonight feeling like ten thousand dollars is gonna keep those sidewalks snow and ice free all went along, because that equipment needs to be here during the storm to remove it before it sets a lot of the time in order for that to take place, and the person we contract with does not have the capacity to do that, and we don't know of anybody else within a reasonable driving distance that will contract with vital services.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for the vote. Okay, is everybody clear? We're voting for the total operating budget of one million, nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-two. I'm gonna try this for the, for the boys' vote.
I don't believe there was a second to that motion.
There was not a second, so I'm not, I'm not recognizing the motion. I'll go back. Would there be a second to just motion? Okay, I've got a more question. All those in favor of appropriating one million, nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So voted. Thank you for all your patience, fine. That was, that is your nuts and bolts of the budget. Wanna go back? I'll see if I can get in order here. Okay. Article seven. Okay, we got a long way to go, so hopefully you'll bear with us. Hello, if you didn't want to leave, I can find, but please try to be quiet, we're gonna move along. Order here. Article seven, highway truck purchase. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of a hundred and nine thousand dollars for the purpose of a new, a purchase of a new highway truck. Sum of a hundred and nine thousand dollars shall be withdrawn from the Highway Capital Truck Reserve Fund. Fund balances at twelve thirty-one fifteen, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and five dollars and fifty-two cents. Selectmen in favor? Spend no good second. Is there any second? Any comments? All those in favor, if they can clap, saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Article eight, Capital Reserve Fund Fire Truck. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of eighty thousand dollars to be placed in the Federal Department of Truck Capital Reserve Fund. Fund balances at twelve thirty-one fifteen, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars and eight cents for the purpose of purchasing a new fire truck. Selectmen in favor? So voted. Is there any question? Not? All those in favor, if they can clap, saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Article nine, Capital Reserve Fund Road Reconstruction. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of sixty-five thousand dollars to be placed in the Road Reconstruction Capital Reserve Fund. Fund balances at twelve thirty-one fifteen is three thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and forty-five cents for the purpose of road reconstruction of town roads. Selectmen in favor? Men move in second. Is there any question? Not? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Article ten, Capital Reserve Fund Highway Truck. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of fifty thousand dollars to be placed in the Highway Truck Capital Reserve Fund. Fund balances at twelve thirty-one fifteen, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and five dollars and fifty-two cents for the purpose of purchasing a new highway truck. Selectmen in our favor?
So voted.
Second.
Men move in second. Is there any questions? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Transfer station, article eleven. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of fifty thousand dollars to be placed in the Transfer Station Expendable Trust Fund. Fund balances at twelve thirty-one fifteen is ninety-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents for the purpose of improvements to the transfer station buildings and equipment. Selectmen in favor?
So voted. Second.
Move in second. Do I have any questions?
Now, Gina Pita John, just asking, do we have a new written agreement, the town abatlet for the operation of the transfer station? We did redo that. Because you know, it was a, you know, the old rate. So we're paying fifty percent of the, uh, major destruction. Okay?
Any other questions? If not, all those in favor, if they can clap, saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? So voted. Police Cruiser Purchase. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of $45,000 for purchase of a new police cruiser. The sum of $37,500 shall be withdrawn from the Police Cruiser Capital Reserve Fund, the Article nineteen. For the purpose, approximately $6,000 shall come from the proceeds from the sale of the 2011 police cruiser and $1,500 be raised by taxation. Selectmen in favor?
Second.
Then move and second. Is there any questions? Yes, Jerry?
The $6,000 from the selling of the vehicle, the current vehicle, is that still the plan?
No, I didn't know if they intended to keep it for another year or something. There's some talk about that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Article thirteen, Vital Jackson Ambulance Capital Reserve Fund. See if the town will vote to establish a Vital Jackson Ambulance Capital Reserve Fund under provisions of RSA 35:1 for the purpose of purchasing an ambulance and to raise appropriate sum of $45,000 to be placed in this fund. Further, to name the selectmen as agents to expend from said fund. Selectmen in favor?
No move. Second.
Then move and second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Fourteen, Highway Repair. The money market. Okay. We're in the money market today. Sorry about that. I didn't want to. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of $37,472 for the purpose of highway road projects. Funds to be offset with the highway block ring. Selectmen in favor? Move and second. Is there any questions? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Article fifteen, ETF State Roads. Expendable trust fund. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of $30,000 to be placed in the state aid reconstruction expendable funds. Fund balance as of 12/31/15 is $9,464.3 for the purpose of repairing and maintaining state roads in Jackson. Selectmen in favor? Move and second. Is there any question? Not? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. State sidewalk, maybe that will qualify. Okay. Capital Reserve Fund Heavy Highway Vehicles. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of $30,000 to be placed in the heavy highway vehicle Capital Reserve Fund. Fund balance as of 12/31/15 is $60,080.99 for the purpose of purchasing a heavy highway vehicle. Selectmen in favor? Move and second. Is there any discussion?
Jay, how naive question. What is the difference between a heavy highway vehicle and a highway truck?
An example of that would be the crater we purchased about three years ago, the six-wheel drive, very long.
That's a heavy highway vehicle.
That's right. It's several hundred thousand dollar vehicle as opposed to a hundred thousand dollars. Takes a lot longer to get a lot of money back into the fund for the vehicles. Okay. Is there any discussion on this? Okay. If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Okay. Expendable Trust Fund Bridges, Article seventeen. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of $25,000 to be placed in the Bridge Repair Expendable Trust Fund. Fund balance as of 12/31/15 is $38,586.41 for the purpose of repairing and maintaining bridges. Selectmen in favor?
No move. Second.
Move and second. Is there any question or discussion? Yes?
Just me. Is that enough money long-term to plan on spending on bridges in this town? It would be serious. If one collapsed, it would cost a heck of a lot of money. And I mean, it doesn't seem logical to, for spending money. Why not waste their money and if something really happens, you know, Jay, he'd probably tell us what the condition of all the bridges are.
That particular money we're getting is for the start of architecture. For engineering, so that we can prepare for whole ideas and roads. Working in state bridge program. Where state bridge program pays 80%, we pay 12. So that amount of money is spent into the engineering for the next year if we were in the money that we got.
Do you know how many bridges we have in government to maintain?
Well, a lot of police.
Oh, do you know how many bridges around in town that would have to be maintained and repaired?
That's the only bridge right now that is in condition at all for the foreseeable future.
Thank you.
The selectmen, I believe they're expecting you, all the bridges now, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions on this?
Phil Terry, a question. Does this fund include fixing the walkway on the Valley Cross Bridge?
Again, this is a process here as we get.
I mean, a more immediate correction. I think you mentioned four or five years. I was wondering if there's any intent.
We're going to keep that crosswalk closed until we get it fixed, obviously. It's probably going to take that long.
I appreciate that. Could you answer my question, please? My question is, does this fund anticipate a more immediate repair of the walkway of the Valley Cross Bridge in the coming year?
It does not. It does not include anything for the year. It's for future repair of the bridge, which we're also including crosswalk at that time of year. For repair of the entire bridge and crosswalk.
May I ask a question then as to whether or not there's any intention of fixing the walkway based on the fact that there are several hundred thousand visitors who go on that bridge?
No.
Not this year. Not in the plans.
It's too excessive work to be done. We have to go through state funding process. We have to, it's a massive job.
We're either going to end up getting a million dollars from the state to put towards the bridge, actually $800,000. We would contribute $200,000. That's one option. And that's like in the summer of 2018, 19, right in there. Or we'll decide to do a $200,000 fix on our own. Right now, we're currently having some engineers look at it and make some recommendations. Does it pay to have a million dollar fix that we contribute $200,000 to? Or would it be in our better interest to repair it ourselves, not wait for the state assistance, not do a complete bridge repair with $200,000? But either way, we can't just go in there right now and make the sidewalks structurally sound with some sort of a minimal impact. It'd be throwing good money after that if we did it. But like I said, we do have some engineering reports coming with it this spring, over the summer.
Okay. I heard you hand up over here. Jay Henry?
Bob nailed it. That's pretty much it. We looked at multiple ways to repair in pounds or hiring a contractor to help us and it was going to cost $150,000 probably. So the option was, well, I spend $150,000 to repair it. If we could spend $200,000 to fix a whole bridge in the last 50 years.
Any other questions, Thomas?
I'm agreeing with Gina that if you're in this conversation here, that if we're going to have to put $200,000 of our money into it one way or the other, then we probably should be accumulating money into the fund now as opposed to getting kicked two years from now with $200,000.
That's why we're putting away $25,000. This year, we may put up it next year. It's again, it'll be on the table for revisiting next year.
You should have a much better. From my understanding, for next year's town meeting, they will have a much better explanation and a plan of what direction they want to go in. Is there any other?
Yeah. Do you nail that then, Tom? That was exact. This year, that money is for engineering and figure out what to do. Next year, I have a better idea and can increase it.
Any other questions, Thomas? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Okay. Article eighteen, Capital Reserve Fund, the Old Library Building. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of $16,000 to be placed in the Old Library Capital Reserve Fund. Fund balance as of 12/31/15 is $435.21 for the repair and restoration of the Old Jackson Library. The sum of $3,500 shall come from the Old Library Committee and $12,500 to be raised by taxation there.
So voted.
Move and second. Is there any question? Not? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Article nineteen, Capital Reserve Fund Police Cruiser. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of $15,500 to be placed in the Police Cruiser Capital Reserve Fund. Fund balance as of 12/31/15 is $22,42.99 for the purpose of purchasing a new police cruiser. Selectmen in favor? Move and second. Is there any discussion?
I have a question and it certainly is not against police, but it's $52,000 increase for police department. It's $15,000 for police cruiser. There's another $1,500 to be raised by taxation. On top of that, that's a lot of money. What's the background of decision that you need a police cruiser now? You can't wait a year. We're talking basically $63,000 increase in a police department budget. How does that come about and get decided that way?
The logic with vehicle replacement is always the same. We get what we can out of the vehicle and we have a target.
Is it going to fail inspection and get deferred another year?
Then.
Let him finish his question and direct it back to me. He won't give you an answer. Go ahead, Bob.
Our logic is the same with all vehicles we replace, that we replace. We ask for contributions throughout the year so that we have enough to purchase a vehicle at the time we need a vehicle. So if we get voter approval, every year that we ask for voter approval on a warrant article, we'll have enough to purchase the next police cruiser in a timely fashion. Okay? We understand what we have for mine with junk cruiser. We understand what kind of a shape it's in. We understand what it would take for that vehicle to get through another year. And we're proposing that you support this warrant article so that we don't have a vehicle that we end up throwing lots of repair money into because that's, it's not a healthy situation to be in.
And are you saying, just like I can understand that the, this vehicle, again, I'm looking at $62,000.
Sir, I'm not going backwards to the $50,000 they're operating by. This is on the police cruiser, keep it to that article.
The vehicle, it's been determined by mechanics that at the rate that it's used, there's not an additional year of service on it.
Correct.
If you turn to page 104, there is a breakdown of our assets or capital improvement list of all the vehicles that we have in town. We try to schedule it. Now, could there be a year where we can take a year off from buying a vehicle? Certainly it could. You know, if that vehicle is running well, doesn't need maintenance, we can postpone a year in 2021 as offered here to them.
Sir, I also need you to answer the record. We don't.
Jason Rock.
And just a point on that. If you went back for at least 20 years plus, we have had a very tight maintenance of replacing the police cruisers. This is replacing, I believe, the 2011 cruiser. So it's certainly served a lot of time for the town. And just to help answer your question, is that, that answer what you're looking at? Can't go back to the other discussion. That's a separate story. Okay. Any other questions on this particular article? Question, comment? Okay. If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Town Officer Nick, if the town office air conditioners, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of $8,750 for the purpose of replacing the town office air conditioner. Selectmen in favor? Move and second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Okay. Article 21, Reevaluation of Town Property. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of $8,000 to be placed in the reevaluation of town property Capital Reserve Fund. Fund balance as of 12/31/15 is $20,654.78 for the purpose of reevaluating Jackson property. Selectmen in favor? Move and second. Is there any questions? Not? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Okay. Article 22, Expendable Trust Fund Dry Hydrant. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of $5,000 to be placed in the Dry Hydrant Expendable Trust Fund. Fund balance as of 12/31/15 is $10,191.43 for the purpose of repairing dry hydrant. Selectmen in favor? Are any questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Article 23, Expendable Trust Fund Police Equipment. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of $3,000 to be placed in the Police Department Equipment Expendable Trust Fund. Fund balance as of 12/31/15 is $1323.95 for the purpose of purchasing, repairing, or maintaining police department equipment. Selectmen in favor? Move and second. Is there any question or discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Fireworks, Article 24. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of $3,000 for the Jackson Chamber of Commerce for the purpose of contributing to the fireworks fund. Selectmen in favor? I got it. Okay. Any questions on this? I was almost going to say I got to have a second, but I got it. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Article 25, Children Unlimited. This is a petition article. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of $3,000 for Children Unlimited Inc. for the purpose of supporting the early support and service program, birth to three years submitted by petition. Selectmen in our favor? Move and second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Tri-County Community Action Petition. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of $3,000 for the Tri-County Community Action for the purpose of continuing services of the Fuel Assistance Program for the residents of Jackson submitted by petition. Selectmen in favor? Move and second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Gibson Center, a petition article. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of $2,500 for the Gibson Center for Senior Services for the purpose of supporting Jackson Home Delivered Meals, congregate meals, transportation, and program services. for the Gibson Center for Senior Services for the purpose of supporting Jackson Home Delivered Meals, Conqueror Meals, Transportation, and Program Services, submitted by petition. Selectmen, favor? Move and second it. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify saying aye? Opposed? So loaded. Twenty-eight, the White Mountain Community Health Center Petition. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate one thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars for the White Mountain Community Health Center for the purpose of providing care to county residents who are uninsured or other, or underinsured medical care, submitted by petition. Selectmen, favor? Move and second it. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye? Opposed? So loaded. Article twenty-nine, Beautification Project. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of one thousand dollars for the Jackson Chamber of Commerce for the purpose of contributing to the Holiday Beautification Project. Selectmen, favor? Move and second it. Is there any discussion?
Is that to do with Christmas lights?
Christmas decorations. Any other questions? Holiday, excuse me, holiday, yes. Any other question on this? All those in favor, signify saying aye? Opposed? So loaded. Article thirty, Conway Area Community Society Petition. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate one thousand dollars for the Conway Area Community Society for the purpose of continuing services for stray, abandoned, and neglected animals bought by the shelter, by animal control, or private citizens, no longer able to care for them, submitted by petition. Selectmen, favor? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify saying aye? Opposed? So loaded. Article thirty-one, Starting Point Petition. See if, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of eight hundred and thirty-four dollars for starting points for the purpose of providing advocacy and support of victims to domestic and sexual violence and their children, submitted by petition. Selectmen, favor? Move and second it. Do we have any discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify saying aye? Opposed? So loaded. Northern Human Services Petition. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of seven hundred and sixteen dollars for the Northern Human Services for the purpose of providing Jackson residents who are uninsured, services at a sliding fee scale, submitted by petition. Selectmen, favor? Move and second it. Do you have any question? Discussion? All those in favor, signify saying aye? Opposed? So loaded. Article twenty-eight, White Mountain Community Health Center Petition. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate thirteen hundred and thirty-six dollars for the White Mountain Community Health Center? We only got a couple more to go. Okay, Article thirty-three, Eastern Smoke Airport Petition. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate five thousand, five hundred dollars for the Eastern Smoke Airport Authority for the purpose of contributing to the operation of the Eastern Smoke Regional Airport, submitted by petition. Selectmen, favor? Is that a year or second? Okay. If there are any questions? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye? All those opposed? So loaded. Three more. Article, we have one more article that we have to act on. It's over here or not here. It's no money, though. Article thirty-four, Pay Investment Management Fees from Capital Reserve Fund. See if the town will vote pursuant to R S A thirty-five nine dash A dash two to authorize the trustees of trust funds to pay expenses incurred for professional banking or brokerage assistance in the management of capital reserve and expendable trust funds in their custody directly from such capital reserve and expendable trust funds. No faith vote by the town to rescind such authority shall occur within five years of the adoption of this article. Selectmen, favor?
Don't move.
So move. Second it. And is there any discussion? What is it?
I'm going to put the Terry on the chairperson of the trustees of the trust funds. Currently, the capital reserve expendable trust funds are invested in the New Hampshire Club of Positive Investment Pool. Our rate of return as of the end of February was point four five, four, four, six percent. Due to a recently passed law, trustees of trust funds are now permitted, subject to getting the appropriate support from the town at the town meeting, to hire investment professionals to assist them in investing their funds in a more diversified portfolio, which hopefully will generate higher investment returns over the long run. Not just interest returns, but hopefully will pace with inflation. So what we are asking is that we be allowed, as a committee, trusting the trust funds to have the opportunity to interview and select investment professionals to help us achieve better returns on the trust funds and then compensate those professionals by taking money directly out of the trust funds themselves. Will we not to handle the payment of their fees in this manner? We would have to request a separate line item in the town budget to be covered by tax revenues.
Yeah, I'm giving you, one thing I needed some, yes, we had a question on here.
Why the five-year contract?
It's statutory. Laurel Smith, I was wondering what you expect fees to be. We have so far interviewed a couple of investment managers and we have a couple more who will be speaking to. And one of the firms we talked to has a fifty basis point fees, so that in contacts, we have approximately total amount, that would amount to, based on the total amounts in the capital reserve and spend of trust funds, about one point two million. That would be six thousand dollars in fees. We are going to speak to another investment management firm whose fees on capital reserves are point thirty-five percent. So that would be about four thousand two hundred dollars in fees. And that's a yearly basis? That would be a yearly, non-annual basis. Yes. And it's based on the total number of dollars under management.
Is there any other questions or comments about this article? If not, all, oops, I'm sorry, Terry.
Who is authorized to sign the contract with a, a five-year contract?
The trustees are authorized to sign the contract, but we would not be entering into a five-year contract with any one particular investment firm. Most investment management contracts allow the contract to be terminated on thirty to sixty days' notice. So this is not locking us in using one specific firm for that entire five-year term.
Any other questions or comment on this article? If not, all those in favor, signify saying aye? Opposed? So loaded. Okay. Not in your arm, not in your court, but there is an article that is required by statute for us to act upon. Before everybody just jumps and runs, I've got two things I want to add. This cannot be an article that we can spend any money. But Article thirty-five is to act upon any other business which may legally come before this meeting. Is there any business and anybody that has no monetary value and cannot vote on anything that spend any money in any other business that we can bring up under this article? Terry?
It's not a motion, but the town report is beautifully done. Whoever was responsible in whatever group, they did a nice job. It's an attractive, well-put-together book. I also read the reports of each of the town groups, like the selectmen and the building inspector. They're all well-written and interesting. I would recommend that reading to all citizens.
Any other comments? I've got a couple myself. Peter?
I agree. I think that the book is great. A couple things. When we had petitioned articles, it would say to me that petition was wise. That could be really helpful. And the second is that required. The second piece is, under all the expenses and the pages where all the checks are written, we'd just be good to have a word to about, like, fire department, you know, what that's for, like, professional services, just, so, I mean, there's a lot of names here, but not any context behind the name.
Okay, on the, on the actual
On the actual expenses.
Services paid
Yes, correct.
To individuals, yes.
Talking about the payee summary.
It's not a one-on-five?
Yes.
And, and, and any other questions, comments under this article? I've got a couple, as I said. Anybody else? Okay, Barbara?
Barbara Tario. For those of you who haven't been into town hall recently, town offices recently, I suggest that you go there. There's large work that's been done internally within our town for all who carpeting, but they did themselves. Cabinets and pictures are hanging. School children's pictures are hanging in there. So anybody that goes in for a license renewal or a brave person coming down to pay their taxes for the first time, this really was a very handsome inside building. So thank you for all that anybody did. It looks great.
Lisa Baumgartner, I have to ask the question to ask the question. I have a question about the process for petitioning for warrant articles. Now, I have something to bring up separate.
You can do that. Petition, just submit a petition. There is a deadline prior to next year's town meeting.
Yes, I have a question about the process. I know that, but when is the closing time? Or who do I ask that question?
You could, you could take that to the town's elections office. They'd be happy to walk you through that.
And there is, I believe, you go, pre-payed form, you can do them. It requires a minimum amount of signatures of legal residence and typically, to help you into that, typically, that's been done
I know the typical process.
Budgeting process, but go and get that and you're required to get registered voters' signatures and a minimum amount, depending on your situation.
I do it each year. My question really is more, if it's a typical warrant article and it's the same thing we're doing each year and the same request from a nonprofit each year, is there any way to abridge that process or do we have to do the same format again and again each year? I feel like we're It is a process.
It was, that's been for quite years and it is a process. We did, I believe, we, I don't know whether the statute is clear, but the first name on the petition is always gonna attach to the article. It's pretty difficult.
Yeah.
We'll verify that. Okay. Anybody else have anything? I know everybody's nice to go. There's a couple of quick things. I should have announced this when we had a full house, but the very last page in your arm, there's a very important piece of paper here for you that may not pertain to you, but it may pertain to someone you know in town. It will help your emergency services department tremendously to provide that information. I urge you to read that, pass it on to any people you feel that it should be out there and will help in your event of emergency. So I encourage you to do that. Just another note on the warrant, we are going, we've talked tonight, but to help you understand these breakdowns and these line items in the operating budget section, we'll try to get totals on the same page as the breakdown so you can follow rather than flipping back and forth. We'll try to approve that next year. And I'd like to say a couple things. I know I really, I really feel bad of Joyce's comment and I just would like to re, again, re-express, and I understand, that's not taken personally, but
Please go.
Please. No, it's not. I'm just, on behalf of all the town employees, administrators, selectmen on down with all our departments, Ed, I can't tell you that I, I just, I think everybody is here and everybody is around all the time. If you need information and I just want to make sure that we have a very open, armed, welcome town and we try to answer and I just want to encourage that. That's why we like to try to work together. And for my benefit, sometimes if I cut people off, I'm trying to run the meeting as best I can. I'm trying to keep order, but there is statutes that require that I limit you. You have to discuss the subject matter of the article when we're talking about those things. And I can't go back and forth as much or go back to an article that we've dealt with. So on those terms, I just want to be clear. And I really want to thank everybody. It's been a long night. We had a very long talk there about the operating budget, the nuts and bolts, and I appreciate everybody's cooperation and I thank everybody for coming out. Thank you. And I thank everybody for that are here and not here. We had some pretty tough elections this year earlier. We got two coming in the fall. And I'd like to personally thank all of the volunteers that helped us. We're really gonna meet there in September and November. Sam? Just a reminder, anybody that runs these, these warrants, please come up and do it. With that, I declare the meeting. I take the motion to do pause the meeting. So moved. Move and second it. I declare this meeting.